I'm calling to order the January 29, 2024 Auburn Select Board Meeting. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted both in person and remotely consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public may follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, dial 1-408-650-3123 with access code 235235861, or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided for members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. This meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone else in the room recording? Seeing none, can we rise for the legislative adjournments?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to start with public comments. I don't think there's anybody signed up, so we're going to move along. We don't have presentations or hearings. We're going to start with departmental issues. So there's a request to amend the ARPA allocation for impact shifts to fire overtime, training, recreation, and summer camp discounts. Can we start with fire? Did you want to come up again? Great. Hi. So could you tell us a little bit about the amendment request?
Sure. So last week, I was here discussing the overtime issue relative to what is essentially a total of, at some point or another between July 1st and January 1st, a total of 13 positions that were in and out of the building, which has caused an overtime deficit. So the board voted last week to support using the remaining ARPA allocation that was originally designed for impact shifts to be swung to overtime to close that deficit. The board was looking for a number. That remaining number is $58,413.17. That was the unallocated portion of the impact shifts.
Do board members have any questions?
Yes. I'm looking here on, at the printout of the ARPA fund. So are we looking at the third line, Ms. Kazanovitch, for overtime? Or the second line?
To the chair, Ms. Kavanaugh, that is correct. Third line down.
The third line. So that $300,000 for the impact shifts.
Yes, there was, yes, there was a total appropriated of 170,223. I'm sorry, there was an original of 300 with a supplemental of 170. Looks like 470. 411,810.51 was spent, remaining balance 58,413.17. And as you can see, under unobligated, this would be the amount remaining in all ARPA funds, 1,466,527.37.
Okay, so chief, are you saying that the unallocated portion is $58,413.77?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I'll say.
Madam Chair, through you to the town manager. I believe we're also going to restore your training as well, that you had the zero in order to make up that balance. Do we know how much that was?
27,000.
Yes, that transfer was $27,000.
$27,000, okay. I'm all set, thank you.
Are there any other questions? So we would need a vote for the training. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Madam Chair, I would keep the item separate for accountability purposes, so it doesn't matter which order, but we have to take a vote on amending the remaining balance of $58,413.17 if that's the board's wish to be used for overtime? And then a separate vote would be needed for the training of 27 if that's the board's desire as well.
Thank you, too. I have a motion for the reallocation of the unused overtime fund.
Yes. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. Is there a motion for the training and fund?
I'd make a motion that we allocate $27,000 in ARPA funds for training in the fire department line item.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Chief.
I believe we also, in the same one, we had a request to look at summer camp discounts.
Madam Chair, work director is here, Kristen Pappas. If the board should have any questions.
So Madam Chair, I'll just kick this one off since I was the one that raised this. So over the summer, several constituents reached out to me because this board originally allocated $20,000 to be used for discounts to the very popular summer camp program. It was supposed to be over two years, however, the demand actually used it all up in one year. So they had contacted me because they were looking for some financial support and were surprised that it had all been used. Given the popularity, given the clear demand in the community for it, since we're talking about ARPA money, I'd like to propose that we allocate an additional $20,000 out of the remaining ARPA money to go to the same summer camp discount program for this upcoming year and carry over if it's unused to the year after. So $20,000 over two, up to two years.
Do board members have any questions?
I have questions. So I was part of the board that allocated the first $20,000 to be used up to two years. I know at that time, we didn't have a way to track need, like if it's need-based. I just, I want, is there a better way to do it to ensure the people that need the additional support get it as opposed to allowing everybody access to it? I'm not opposed to allowing everybody, I'm not opposed to it, and I'm not opposed to allowing everybody access to it, but I would, I would like to see that the families that need it the most get that support. So is there a way to do that? Is it like best way through like school system or something along those lines? I know at that time, part of the issue was that we didn't have anybody more or less to manage it and to ensure that they, you know, to make the determination on who would be, who would qualify for it. And I just want to make sure that the people who need it the most get it. Is there, is there a better way we could do this?
I wish I could say there was a way to manage that. Unfortunately, I think the administrative aspect of that alone is going to require a full-time person to collect all that information, to verify whether or not the income is correct. We don't know if we're capturing all the assets of, we have no way of verifying certain information that's provided to us.
Through the chair, could we work with the school department? Because they have to qualify students for free lunch or other, other programs.
So is my understanding that everyone gets a free lunch now, so?
Yeah, but there are some other discounts that are available, so they still do some qualifying on that.
That's something we would have to look into, and I quite honestly, I don't know if, if the school department would be allowed to share that information with us.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
So can I, I agree with the chair that I'd like to see this go to, to residents who are in need financially. I know that there's several state programs, including the MBTA Youth Pass, that has the requirement that provided you are part of, or can demonstrate that you are part of a state or federal aid program. So you could be SNAP, WIC, disability, any, any list, there's about 30 different that they utilize, that as long as you show that you are a member of one of those, you're eligible for that program. It doesn't require submittal of financial statements, doesn't require submittal of a whole bunch, you just have to demonstrate that you have, that you're a member of one of those groups. So if there's a desire, that might be an easier way to do it.
It's a great suggestion. I think that would make it more clear-cut. I think we'd have to identify those assistant programs, because I'm sure there are many of them out there that, that are granted.
I would like, thank you for doing this. I did have a great conversation with Sally Doc Angelo. I used to work for Auburn Youth and Family Services many, many years ago, and there's a very lengthy process when, you know, you're looking to supplement the income or do scholarships. My fear with that is allocated 20 hours for rec and 20 hours in the senior center, and I don't, I would, I think we would need to hire someone to do that, to be fair to everybody. The 20,000 that was used in 2022 was across the board, and everyone that used it was so grateful. If you wanted to go the route to see if their income verified, Sally explained it, it's metaphorically like a fuel assistance, so, but we would need some documentation to, guidelines for me to move forward with that, and then I would need help.
Well, I think the income verification component would be dismissed if they showed as proof of, through a card that they receive or whatever, demonstrating that they're getting some form of financial assistance. So there'd be no verification, no paperwork.
Okay, so we just took the card.
Maybe you just take the card and maybe keep a picture of it for the file as evidence to show that they did qualify.
Okay, and those applicants wouldn't, we just started in online format, so those maybe would go in person then.
How much is the tuition for the summer camp?
$250 a week. But it's an alacot menu, so you can go a half a day or a full day, depending on grandparents or, you know, mom's home or dad works part-time. So we try to make it accommodating for all different families.
Good question, because I did ask the question as to what we were going to do, because I think it's a great program, but after this year, what happens? So we're providing assistance for a year, just like we did two years ago. So my concern is we're not going to have ARPA money, and it doesn't sound like there's been any discussions as to how we can fund this. You know, I had asked if there was any of the community partners would be willing to help with this, but I absolutely agree that there is a way to do it without the income verification, which would make it a lot easier, because I know a lot of the museums now, if you have a SNAP card, you can get in for free.
It's great. I love it.
So that's my only concern with the program is we could do something with this 20,000 that's going to last beyond a year, even though I know that this is a program that is very popular and very useful. So that's, that's my sole reservation is we're putting $20,000 into this for this year. We could use that 20,000 for something else. So that's, that's my concern.
We don't have any information that would tell us how much of the original 20 was needs-based. I can't tell you, and I can tell you, the 20 didn't, didn't allow for 100% discount for all those who participated. We ran out of money in year one. I think the initial request that came before the board was for 60, 2020 and '20 for a three-year period, but I think the board wanted to monitor the level of need or activity in year one. Unfortunately, that was all, 100% was utilized in '22, which was year one. And so beyond the ARPA funds, I think the only way to provide for future offset would be through local contribution or a subsidy from the municipality, or whether or not there would be donors willing to provide a sum of money to assist in that offset. But that's something we cannot pursue because we're not allowed to ask for donations, but I know there are certain groups out there that, that are allowed to do that.
My concern is, it's a needed program. I have absolutely no doubt that there's need in the community. That's been my argument, why I haven't moved the factor back numerous times. I know that there's need in the community, and we make it harder for people, but I just can't bring myself to support it because I think we're creating a cliff. We're creating something that, okay, for this year, you're okay, but next year, you got nothing. So that's, I would like to see us have had some plan ahead of time as to what we're going to do so that we can sustain this, because obviously, the need is not going away. So that's, I would rather spend the 20,000 on something that's going to have a permanent effect, so. But I definitely know that you do a great job, and I appreciate the work that's getting done every summer.
I can also just say, Dan, that it definitely helps the parents that come to our camp, and I see I'm on the ground zero with the parents and the kids, and the ARPA money did help a lot, and I know it's not going to be forever, but you know, it does help for this season if you allow it. So you know, I'd hate to see people not get the help if there's a possibility for them to get help, and maybe that child could go to camp another extra day because that allowed them more money to go. So to me, you know, when kids need that experience of being with others instead of home because they can't afford it, and I think, you know, even short-term, this allows kids to have a little bit more freedom and fun with their friends and build relationships. So to me, anything makes a difference with these children and these parents that, you know, are trying to work hard. So I would just take that into consideration, because this is our community, and we want to do our best for them with whatever we can help them with.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion?
So I'll make a motion that we allocate $20,000 out of the remaining ARPA funding to go towards summer camp discount programs, and that this staff attempt to establish a needs-based program for that money.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The chair is yes as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the sneaker recycling drive. Any candidates? Yeah, absolutely. If you prefer to sit, either way, could you just give us your name and your address for the record, and then tell us a little bit about this program?
Sure, of course. My name is Lisa Archer, Ten Westwood Ave. I've lived in Auburn 20 years, and I've always volunteered since I was a little girl. I'll sprinkle in all kinds of volunteering, but currently, I'm the president of the booster club at Auburn High School, and we usually do a big fundraiser to support four scholarships that we give out, and we have coaches for requests, so if a coach needs something, we decide we can fund that as well. So instead of doing like one big fundraiser, which typically with a golf tournament, I did a wine event, those were the big ones. We have been doing little ones. We did like a 50-50 raffle of football games, and our vice president, Chris Hill, which saw this particular one at another school and brought it to our meeting and said, "How about we do this? How about we recycle?" And I, being a solid waste advisory committee member, put it down. I was like, "This is amazing. This is great." So we decided to contact with GotSneakers.com, and they recycle sneakers, and then we're nonprofit at a booster club, and they would give us money. If the sneakers were in excellent condition, you'd get $7. If it's good, you'd get $3, and if it's bad, you'd get $1. So we already get $0, but the positive is they're playfulness because it's an end-of-life situation now. So we, I'm here to see if I could put this little bin in the town hall, and it's only a month. We didn't extend it till March 8th, February 1st, because the school has a week off in the middle. So if residents had an opportunity to drop it off during that week, they could bring it here. Now, I certainly could. We have two big bins in the high school. Definitely got a donation from Home Depot, gave us a bin, and we're going to have a bit similar. So we could put it in the middle school or Swanson Road, but because I'm so passionate about recycling, and I'm on the solid waste advisory committee, I would ask the board, and I could appreciate you letting me come and speak about it, and if you allow it, I appreciate that, too. I thought I would bring it here and just show that it's not just me doing the meeting for the town, like I'm always thinking of how we could go out of the landfill. I also got approval from the principal of the high school to have the bins there, and the superintendent, so I'm okay with it.
Thank you so much. Do board members have any questions?
No, I just think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Pretty sure I can fill that bin myself, and then my family could probably fill a couple bins. It's an excellent idea. Thank you for bringing it.
One more thing I'll let you know, just so, it is kind of small. I will weekly come personally myself and pick up the sneakers, so it doesn't look like a trashy mess. All I can do is put it in this envelope, mail it out, and so we make a lot of these, and they just keep giving us some work throughout the month. So just to let you know that, I'm around, and I'll be leaving the month of February, and I will clean it up every time I come into the town hall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion?
I would make a motion that we allow the box to be stored or displayed here for Got Sneakers.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So moving along, we have no communication items. We have select board general items. We have a vote to schedule a public meeting for the proposed development at 88 Wallace Avenue by Westwood Associates. Were you able to speak to Westwood Associates to see their availability?
I did. As a matter of fact, I received a call from a resident shortly after the meeting, asking when that meeting was going to take place. He indicated to me that there was some conflicts in the month of February due to some of Butters already scheduled some vacation time, and asked if that meeting could be held sometime in March. At that point, I called Sotier, the developer, and he was willing to work with the neighbors to accommodate them as best he could. So I think it's scheduled for March 11th, and the developer is fine with that, and so are the Butters.
Great. Do we need to, board members, availability? Do we, do board members have to attend a public meeting?
So that's your regularly scheduled meeting?
Oh, great.
Yep.
Sorry. Thank you so much. Okay, great. So do board members have any questions?
I just have one quick question, because it's unclear to me. Is Mr. Sotier looking for a lip? Is he in any way? That was not clear.
So we had that conversation. He would prefer a, well, a letter of support from the board, basically the equivalent of a lip. But certainly, we don't understand or know the impacts at this point in time, so it may be premature to suggest a letter of recommendation until the public hearing takes place and we understand a little bit more about some of the neighborhood impacts that may be brought to the board's attention at that public hearing.
There any additional questions?
Yes, would the hearing be at 5:00 prior to the select board meeting? Or be part of the select board meeting?
It would be part of the select board meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no additional questions, we can move along. There are no proclamations.
Do we need a vote?
We need a vote.
I would like a vote.
All right.
I'll make a motion. We schedule the meeting for the proposed development at 88 Wallace Ave, Westwood Associates, at 6:45 on March 11th.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. Thank you. So we have no proclamations or recognitions. We have no gift acceptances. We're going to move to town manager items, and I will let you, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, under item A, provided to you a letter of award that we received from D O E R with regards to a green communities grant application that we submitted. This is going to provide $155,244 for some heat pump system work at Brimmar School. I want to thank Brooke Holgren for being very active in making this happen. She was very thorough. She worked with Joe Fahey on this to come up with cost estimates, and we are pleased that we received this grant award. Certainly, it's savings to our taxpayers, because this work would need to be done to make one of our school facilities energy efficient.
That's right.
Brooke, unfortunately, is in a meeting across the hall. I was hoping she could be here, but she's currently participating in another meeting.
Does this grant cover the full cost of the project?
I'm sorry?
Does this grant cover the full cost of the project?
A full cost?
Yeah, or is there additional expenditures needed?
No, I believe there's a credit that we received, so at times, we advance the credit portion, but we get it back from, from NGRIT or whoever's doing the install. So no, no, no cost to the town. This is, this is the gross amount of, of the project.
Excellent. And was there calculated savings or expected savings that made this a green initiative?
I think they provide a payback as a result of the savings. I don't have that with me as part of this, but certainly, I can try to get that information for you.
I'd like to see that. I think anytime we're getting a win or saving long-term, it's probably great to share that with the community. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, so move along to your item B.
So Madam Chair, I wanted to at least let the board know, we just received the governor's numbers, estimated revenue for local aid. And what was provided to you in this letter initially just had the two major items, Chapter 70 and unrestricted local aid. So Chapter 70 is up $71,010. Unrestricted governmental aid is $61,420. Subsequent to getting this email, we also got a release by Division of Local Services, the additional items included on the cherry sheet, which has been provided in this document here, that resulted in a total increase of $166,001. We were somewhat concerned what these numbers were going to reflect, given the fact that the governor just cut $375 million to deal with a projected $750 million revenue projected deficit through June 30th. There's still another amount to be addressed, and then some if the revenue situation doesn't rebound in any way. What I wanted to provide to the board, just to underscore the importance of how difficult it is going to be for the FY '25, if you look at this, what I provided to you this evening, and I just prepared this today, shows an average growth over the last eight years of $942,690. We've been very fortunate in terms of receiving additional state aid. The amount we receive for FY '25 is significantly less than $166, which means there's going to be a greater reliance on general taxation to fund the needs of our FY '25 requests. I'm concerned about that. I don't I, I'm concerned about that. I don't expect this number to change. This revenue outlook to change from the state, given the situation that the, the state administration is looking at. If anything, it may get more bleak from the House numbers and the Senate numbers, because I know they're concerned about 9C cuts, not only this year, but potentially in future years, once the budget is passed. So, I just wanted to give you, I wanted to put that into perspective as it relates to what we're dealing with now. We began our budget deliberations last week with our departments. We continue this week. And we're probably going to be discussing with departments budgetary needs, probably through mid-February and getting to the board in your second meeting in February. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions as it may relate to the FY '25 governor's estimated revenue.
Do board members have questions?
I just have two. Because everything else seems to have an increase. Charter tuition reimbursement seems to have dropped off considerably. And although it seems to be a modest amount, the library seems to have received a small cut. And I just was interested why those items, everybody else is getting an increase, but those two are not.
So, I know the public libraries is formula-driven. I don't know the charter tuition reimbursement, certainly. I'd have to, I would have to look into that. But certainly, that, that's enrollment-driven. So, I'm sure the numbers change from year to year.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions?
When you're ready to present after talking through, can that presentation, and I'm not saying it wasn't going to include obligated cost for like union and contractual spend? And then what is maybe a little bit more leeway or flexibility? So, again, I know when you're going through this and every department's going down their list, I just want to make sure like we understand contractually what we're obligated to. And then where we could direct potential cuts if need be.
I can tell you, the only discretionary items that we would be addressing in the budget would be, would be by way of new positions. And I think we made it clear that we're not in a position to at least fund those at this point in time. Also, that's, that's hard to put a number on because I can tell you in terms of like fleet management, fleet is currently running about $125,000 below last year's actual. At this point in time, it's, it's a projected deficit, 125. So, the DPW is coming in for a transfer. That's why I was concerned with the fire overtime need being funded out of the reserve account when there's other items within the budget that are going to require some attention in order to get us through the end of the fiscal year. We're trying to manage that as best we can. We currently have two sweepers down, not working. In order to get them back on the road, it's going to be an additional $80,000, which they don't have. And it's going to require a transfer from either surplus appropriation, which it's too early to make a termination now, or they're going to have to rely on the ZURF. We're looking at other creative ways to hopefully advance the purchase of a new sweeper through the capital program that may allow some flexibility in making repairs to one by robbing from Peter to, to get Paul back on the road. But we just had someone come out, take a look at that Friday. I haven't gotten an update from the DPW director yet, but we're, we're continually to have those discussions.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? Okay, so to move along, number nine, we have no table items. We have no member items. We do have a period available of public comment, but there is nobody signed up. So, we have no minutes. We would just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well.